All right. Let's call a meeting in order if everybody can stand and remove your hat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, can we get a roll call, please?
I was gonna go outside. Is it from this?
Councilmember Reavis.
Here.
Councilmember Bozak.
Here.
Councilmember Rickner.
Here.
Councilmember Graham.
Here.
Councilmember Jessen.
Here.
Councilmember Simms.
Present.
Mr. President.
All right, looks like we got approval of council minutes for January 4th, 2020. Reorganization meeting.
No, you approve.
Second.
Motion is second on the floor, discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. First reading, please.
Notice is hereby given the taxpayers of Porter County, Indiana, that the proper legal officers of Porter County, Indiana will meet in the Porter County Government Administration Building, located at 155 Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso, Indiana, on January 25th, 2022, at 5:30 PM to consider the following appropriation adjustments to county budgets for the year 2022 and to transact with the public business which might come before the council. General Fund Sheriff salaries $61,677. Sheriff Merit Pay $1,0250. Council Venue Assistance $50,000. Accident Report Fund Training and Education $20,000. Local Income Tax Fund Venue Assistance $50,000. Cumulative Capital Development Fund Motor Vehicles $42,100. Health Fund Hourly $200,000. FICA $15,700. Motor Vehicles $84,000. Public Safety Data Tech Fund Other Equipment $25,000. Taxpayers appearing at such meetings shall have a right to be heard thereon. The appropriation adjustments as finally made will be referred to the Indiana Department of Local Government Finance. Where applicable, the DLGF will make a written determination as to the sufficiency of funds to support the appropriations made within 15 days. Vicki Urbannick, Auditor of Porter County, published January 14th, 2022.
Thank you. All right, first up CCD Fund Commissioners. Looks like it's an additional $42,100 to motor vehicles. The reason 2021 sheriff auction proceeds. Also on there, you guys, I had, Joy just put the $50,000 for venue assistance. There was some options on there. They advertised both the lit or if you go further on the council, coming out of the general fund. To me, you know.
Council general fund?
It just, we're just making the request, that's all. So, I mean, I would just.
Are we gonna do that for later?
Yeah, we can just do it out of the general fund, I think. It's, you know, for the venue assistance.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the motor vehicle.
It's a motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion.
So, we're only talking about the CCD, correct?
Correct.
Additional?
Correct. Further discussion? Can we get a roll call on the additional?
Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Councilmember Rickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Re, Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
So, we're not gonna tackle the?
Six oh.
Yes, under council.
But we're gonna take it out of the council?
Yeah, just the general fund, yep.
We're gonna do it later.
Correct, correct.
But didn't we put that money there for a reason? The council general fund?
Well, it's just doing, we're the one requesting the additional.
Oh, I see.
That's all.
Council fund, I see, understood, thank you.
Health Department. So, it looks like there's a couple of additionals. There's $84,000 to motor vehicles, the reason to purchase two vehicles for the health department, environmental and nursing staff using the additional funds from COVID vaccine administration payment. There's another additional $200,000 to hourly, $15,700 to FICA, reason COVID vaccine and test site employees using funds from COVID vaccine administration payment. There's two additionals in front of you. Hello.
Yes.
Hi, guys.
Hi.
I'll make the motion on both additionals.
Second.
There's a motion, a second on the floor, discussion.
Just wanna tell us just a little bit about what's happening and what you folks have been doing and.
In reference to testing and vaccination?
Yep.
Well, we're testing and vaccinating pretty much every day. We've got the both Portage and Vapple office where we're doing the vaccines. And then, of course, we have the expo where we're doing the testing. And as you can see, some of our numbers are going down, which is, I'm hoping, a good thing. But other than that, we're here to service the community.
I have a question. I saw a new testing site pop up in Chesterton by, is that through the county? I assume not.
No, that's one of those pop-ups that we are concerned about, that we have discussed, and they're under investigation because of the fact that we didn't know about, and as you know, there was one in Portage, and it's not fair.
There were one at Couch two before?
One that came in, two people came in asking. We set up one on Roosevelt Road, and we had a discussion with them, and we were not satisfied with what they proposed. And so, they're still under that whole investigation that Chicago is doing as well.
Are we alerting the public? Because I, I know there's a couple of people that work with me, because it's across the street, that have used that facility.
We posted it on the Facebook website in hopes that we could get some people that will respond and say they have concerns, or this happened, or whatever, so that we can get complaints. Right now, I'm putting something together to present to downstate.
Are those that are part of that specific investigation, are those still operating today, or are they closed?
My understanding, they're all closed.
And a question, so we don't have any testing facilities in Chesterton area. Are we working or planning on doing anything in that?
I mean, there's testing facilities, we just don't, but there's Gravity, there's other places, there's, of course, North Shore and all these other clinics. So, there's several, which we post on our Facebook, so that if someone is looking for a site and we are not open or we're not available, they know where to go.
Thank you.
Has the, has the availability of the free testing kits that are more widely available, has that helped reduce the demand?
I'm not sure if that's really, I think a lot of times what people are coming to us is to get confirmation of whatever that test says. And, but we haven't really heard a lot of people come in and saying, well, I use this test, and I wanna, we, I think we just had a couple of individuals that came to our expo site wanting to get confirmation of what, because of the fact that the school wanted something more than just at-home testing.
What do we, what are you driving the veh, what are the vehicles for?
Well, the vehicles because we've had one vehicle for, since Health Department first started, and that's the same van we've been using, and we have at least three departments, which is the foods, environmental and nursing, who are out. And especially with, actually, all three, they're out daily, and we've been sharing the one vehicle, which we have had to pay a lot in mileage. And now that we have the grant funds, we figure let's take advantage of trying to get vehicles so that each division can have their own, as opposed to sharing and, and having to have all that money that we're paying out.
Thank you.
And you're able, you're able to get some with all the ships and all that stuff? There, there's a couple?
It took a while. We just got one recently, what, about a couple of weeks ago? We, we got one, and right now, there's two on order, which is, we need Chevy Silverado because it's environmental, that goes on the sites. And before with the van, they got stuck in the mud, and then we had to tow them out. And then, right now, we have a vehicle for the nurses' division, because it's usually about seven or eight that travel together when they go out, you know, going to the boats and ships and all that stuff.
Not for gambling.
They're different kind of boats.
I wanna get on this van.
But that, are you anticipating going out to the boats again when the port reopens?
When they, when, if they ask?
Yeah.
They will be there.
Okay.
The good thing is that, as you know, the strike team is coming back again next week. So, they'll be here Wednesday through Saturday, and then we're running it Monday to Tuesday. But usually, I have staff from our department also work with the strike team, so that way, we have cooperation from both sides.
That's good.
Any further discussion, questions? All right, can we get a roll call on both the additionals?
Councilmember Rickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
And Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night, guys.
Final probation, general fund. There's a 144, it's like a reduction.
Make a motion to accept.
$50,965 down to $44,163 probation officer, hiring new replacement officer at a lower rate.
Can we make that retroactive to January 10th, earlier this month, this year?
My motion would be amended to be retroactive January 10th, you said?
Thank you. Now, second, I motion.
Motion is second. There's none, can we get a roll call on the 144 change?
All right. Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Councilmember Rickner.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Take care.
Have a good evening.
E911, E911 surcharge fund. Another 144, it looks like there's a title change, Assistant Director to Deputy Director. Reason this request to have the title for second-in-command of the Porter County Central Communication Center reflect that is, reflect what is commonly used in our industry, no change in salary. So, seems to be an issue. I don't know if it's an issue or not, you know, I just, I brought it up to you, Tony. Somebody referenced an IC code. It says officers entitled to appoint chief or other deputies and employees. And it names the elected officials, county auditor, county treasurer, county recorder, county sheriff. I'm not sure, Tony, but I spoke to you briefly, you said that this is common practice in the area, that Lake County has a number of deputies?
They have two deputy directors, one of support services and one of operations.
What are you saying, that it can't be done?
Do we really wanna get involved with the IC code?
I'm not, I'm not sure, you know, our attorney hasn't had a chance, he's not here. Obviously, you guys know he fell, but, I mean, you know, I don't think they're gonna come take our funding away or anything like that if we call somebody, but I don't, it's up to you guys. I mean, Tony, is there a?
I would suggest we let our attorney review it and just make, make the change next month if it's okay.
I think the issue that we've experienced is that when you have an appointed position like directors, I think some of the issues that we're having is that they're letting their, what they call their deputy directors, sign as though they are deputized, and they're not. You know, they're not officially legally authorized to sign off on some of the legal documents that our office collects, such as accounts payable vouchers, 99As, 99Cs, which are the payroll forms. So, it's important that the directors understand that they don't have the authority to assign those signing capabilities to their second-in-command. And when it comes to appointed positions, you can only go up, you can't go down. Whereas, like in the constitutional offices, they are actually, they are officially deputized, which requires a recording document. And that, so then I can actually sign Vicki's name, and I'm authorized by law to sign on her behalf. And so, it's more so important that they acknowledge that they don't have the authority to let their people take those responsibilities.
Tony, was it your?
As far as the title change, you know, it is what it is.
My question is, in the event that I am on vacation and we're doing payroll, she should have the authority to sign off on payroll, correct?
Not by law, no. You are the only person that has the authority to obligate your budget.
Start doing it right?
We have to figure out how that works.
So, you'd have to go up.
You're telling me you're doing everything wrong? Don't do it wrong!
But now.
I'm not talking about approving things that are right stuff. Time and attendance is one thing, the legal document that's actually generated from time and attendance, that's what I'm referring to, your gross attendance worksheet, that is collected and maintained in perpetuity by law.
Correct.
So, right stuff is one thing, you're approving that after the fact. Your obligation as a director is to come back into the office, review that activity, make sure it's accurate, and then sign the gross attendance worksheet.
So, in the event that the director is gone during that time, on vacation during payroll, is she authorized to sign at that point in time?
No, nobody should be signing on your behalf at that point in time. She can approve the attendance record, but the payroll record itself is a legal document that only you can sign.
Let me ask you this, Tony, have, have you been signing these things that are supposedly not allowed to be signed?
I have not yet, no.
Not yet, we've had previous deputies signing that in the event that I was not there, and that's what's been done by the department prior to my arrival as well.
Well, it, you should be signing it. It's your budget.
Well, I mean, it's clear that there's enough uncertainty about it in terms of the code versus, we're talking semantics, or we're talking approval, or we're talking about formal documents that have to be signed by someone who's deputized. I mean, if that's, if that's the reality, then we need to honor it, but I'm, and I'm not sure if that's.
And that's more of a process than an actual, whatever you call your person, it is what it is, as far as responsibility goes. Being deputized means something specific.
But I guess my question with this is, if they've, if that practice has been done before, shouldn't your office been the one that caught it, or no?
In some cases, they are caught, not always.
But you never knew about that.
Because not everybody turns their stuff in on a timely basis either. We also, we do go through a payroll process of recording who's turning this stuff in. We can't, we can't force people to turn in their paperwork.
Well, no, but if it's done incorrectly with a signature, then that's gotta be checked. But if they don't know they're doing it wrong, it's not quite their fault. I guess that's what I'm trying to understand. So, we don't have this happen again. Are there other departments that might be doing the same thing?
It's, it's unlikely.
Why are you nodding your head? Don't nod your head! No!
The department head in all cases should be the one that's reviewing their payroll.
All right, I would, maybe we just, we table this till next month, we talk to Harold, you know, you guys communicate, it's not, nothing's gonna be interrupted, correct? I mean, there's, by, this title change not happening, there's no, nothing's gonna be affected in terms of operations. So, maybe we just.
Just keep the person as assistant.
We'll just hold on to the name change for now, we won't do it, we'll have Harold, you know, look at this, and we'll, we'll get it corrected. There's, nothing's gonna change in service, so.
Sorry, man, we just found out about this.
We'll, we'll work through it.
But we would've warned you before the meeting, to be honest.
Do you wanna do something with this officially on the agenda then, or?
Motion to table.
Second. Motion is second to table, further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Sorry. We'll, we'll work through it, don't worry about it. Yep.
Have a good night, guys.
All right, Porter County Sheriff Garage and Jail. Sheriff General Fund, there's an additional, $61,000. $61,677 of salaries, $1,250 to merit pay, and the reason for that is to cover the cost of an additional merit officer due to an officer out sick at this time. Then there's a Form 144, zero to $61,677 first-class patrolman, reason to cover the cost of an additional merit officer due to another officer out sick at this time. That's the sheriff, you want me to keep going? There's a Sheriff Accident Report Fund, additional $20,000 to training and education, the reason to cover the cost and training for new officers' implementation on the accident reconstruction team. That's the sheriff, you wanna stop there?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
There's a motion and a second on the.
For all three.
On the additional, the 144, and the second additional.
Right.
Motion is second, discussion. Can we get a roll call on all three, the additional, the first additional, the 144, and the, the second additional, the accident report fund?
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Councilmember Rickner.
Yes.
And Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Jail. Public Safety Data Tech, an additional, $250,000 to other equipment, the reason to cover the cost of the equipment installation of LPR cameras at various locations throughout the county. This technology help when solving cases such as Amber Alerts, Silver Alerts, and drug trafficking. Jail. Public Safety Data Tech, an additional in front of you.
I'll make the motion to approve.
There's a motion.
Second.
Second on the floor. Discussion.
One, and I'm not sure if this was just an error, or the request is for additional $250,000, and is there a reason why we advertised $25,000?
I think she missed, she misspoke, I think.
I'm sorry? Was it advertised for $25,000 or $250,000? On the public, public safety, $25,000. $25,000. It was supposed to be $250. Do we have two?
How do you count that?
You'll have to re, you'll have to re-admit for additional, then for additional.
You have to redo it?
It was for $25,000.
Yeah, we're about $225,000 off.
Yeah.
So, in order to actually approve that full amount, it has to, the additional amount has to be.
They'll have to re-advertise it for next month.
Do they advertise it for $25,000?
Can we approach this again next agenda, next month? Is that okay?
But you got it on the agenda, right?
It's not on the legal right.
There's the, the 25.
Would the $25,000 get you started for what you need, or is there any value to approving that and then come back next time for the?
Not really.
No. We, we can just wait and do it all together. I mean, not that we can't.
I think our hands are kinda, kinda tied here.
Right.
Tied with the amount, but I think the question is, move forward with this, or just, just wait?
Let's just wait.
Yeah, I don't see any reason to.
Do you wanna, there's a sec, first and second, will you withdraw your motions?
I'll withdraw the second.
Withdraw.
I mean, I don't.
I withdraw too.
It's on the agenda, well, I mean, it's on the agenda at the proper amount.
It wasn't advertised, unfortunately.
It's not advertised, yeah.
We're gonna see if there, is there anything else? If there's not enough, I was gonna say there might be a transfer, but we can't do a transfer.
So, there's nothing if we approve this? If we approve this right now, and then you advertise it, I mean, does it still have to be then approved again, the second, you know? So, us, there's no point us approving it?
So, people can speak out, yeah.
No.
Or speak for.
All right. All right, I mean, do we need action to table then, or just, just leave it, just pass it?
You can just decline it if you want to. If you wanna table it, you can, and then I have to advertise for $225 next month. It's up to you.
Go to your table. We can get rid of it.
So, if I all advertise the balance in, in the following month, and then it'll be $250 total.
Do you wanna?
Or you can just do the full amount again.
Do you wanna just deny it then, the 25? Well, I mean, we're denying the $250, but that's, I mean, it was, the agenda's right, but.
I would say just table it.
I don't know how that gets done.
I would just recommend table it and announce.
How did the error get his ass? I don't know, I don't know, I, I don't wanna, I don't know. I use, I typically use the agenda, but I, it's very possible we just missed it.
All right. All right, entertain a motion to table it for now.
I made the motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Second. And it'll just be right back on the agenda next month, apologize for that. All in favor of tablebing the additional, $250,000?
Aye.
If I'm saying aye, oppose, same sign. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night, guys.
All right, council, general fund. It's like a $50,000 venue assistance, Expo Center venue assistance.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion. Second.
How long is that gonna get us through?
As long as nothing else cancels and we stay trending down, April.
Are we advertising to get people in and try and?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I understand.
It's cancellation.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I.
The calendar is really good, as long as people don't continue to cancel.
Some are moving it, though, right? They're just.
And the numbers are getting better.
Yeah. I don't see as many cars come to the testing site, back site, so, back site's not good, but.
How much does the Health Department pay you to allow them to use your site? I knew that, you're just joking around.
I got a nice big Nippsco bill, I can.
Hey, we're paying for it right now! Your people are busy with COVID testing and helping out.
Yeah, we still have a few events that have not canceled, it was just, it was like, in that, that morning, it was, how many, three that morning?
Big ones, too.
And then with New Year's Eve, and then two other ones since have canceled, just not postponed, just canceled, so.
Why did you answer your phone?
What happens in the deposit situation? Do they get their deposit back?
If they ask for it, but almost all of them, we've been able to have them move it to the next event.
Oh, that's nice. Thank you.
Well, the tape, the numbers are coming down, so hopefully it's a good sign.
A lot.
All right, further discussion? Can we get a roll call on the additional?
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak.
Yes.
Councilmember Rickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Six to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Keep kicking butt.
Whereas it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than was appropriated in the annual budget, therefore, be it resolved by the Porter County Council of Porter County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the funds named and for the purposes specified subject to the laws governing the same. General Fund, $62,927. Accident Report Fund, $1101, $20,000. Local Income Tax, $1112, $50,000. Cumulative Capital Development, $1138, $42,100. Health Fund, $1159, $299,700. This concludes second reading.
All right, entertain a motion to approve, second reading.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second. Discussion. We get a roll call?
Councilmember Reavis.
Yes.
Councilmember Bozak.
He stepped out.
Councilmember Rickner.
Yes.
Councilmember Graham.
Yes.
Councilmember Jessen.
Yes.
Councilmember Sims.
Yes.
Five to zero.
All right. There's that with a couple of snafus, but we'll get it corrected. So, attorney's report, our attorney's not here, he slipped on the ice a couple of weeks ago, so he gets to stay home. Any other matter that may properly, properly come before the council? I know there's some people here regarding, you know, ARP, it's not on our agenda, I think, as you guys can see, we're gonna approve that next month. We wanted to work through the, the premium pay to make sure we get that all right, so we'll be approving that on the next month. In the meantime, two is, we held some public input at the Opera House in the beginning of December, since then, the commissioners have put up a page, you know, taking input, you know, we're getting those on a regular basis, reviewing those, and now take a step further. It sounds like, you know, the commissioners are proposing putting together a couple committees, you know, a steering kind of head committee, and then three, three kind of subcommittees. And my understanding, those, I think they'll all have some public input, I would think that the majority of the work will probably go on with the subcommittees. I jotted them down, looks like those subcommittees will kind of, you know, following the Treasury guidelines, looks like the subcommittees will be infrastructure, facilities, and tourism, one, nonprofits, business, the other, and the third one will be social issues and mental health. And I guess from our perspective, because we ultimately, you know, will approve all of the money, that we definitely should have two or three council members sitting on each committee, along with, I believe, a commissioner, and, you know, I believe they're gonna reach out, you know, get citizens on those committees to have public hearings, I don't know if it's one, two, three, you know, they'll, they'll, they'll open it up to the public, you know, and imagine at that point in time, people, nonprofits, you know, other organizations, businesses come up at that point in time, and, you know, you know, what, what's the issue, what's, you know, what, you know, that organization or business or group thinks, you know, needs to be resolved, you know, do they have a plan to resolve it and partners? So, that'll be the perfect time to, you know, address that the issues are out there, you know, as it relates to COVID and ARPA, and, you know, kind of solutions too, to, so that the committee can work through that and come up with a game plan to address those issues, you know, that's presented. But with that being said, you know, two, so we gotta figure out, you know, at some point in time, you know, who wants to sit on, on those committees, as, as long as I think the commissioners are gonna move forward with that, I believe they are. So, we'll need a couple, you know, two or three of us to sit on infrastructure, facilities, tourism is one, nonprofits, businesses is another, social issues, mental health, and obviously, it looks like they're gonna cross over, because a lot of nonprofits deal with social issues and mental health, so this is gonna be a good opportunity for groups, businesses, you know, I don't wanna, I'd like to name a few, but I don't wanna leave any out, but, you know, you can say like, the caring place, or whether it's the Boys and Girls Club, or whether it's YMCA, is whether it's housing opportunities, just to name a few organizations that say that there's, there's an issue out there, whether it's homelessness or something, and come to us, or come to these subcommittees with, with ideas and how to solve those issues, and then we can move forward and, and work together and, and solve some of these issues out there. So, you know, we can wait, you know, we can, you guys can volunteer, we can, you know, let me know what you want, I can tell the commissioners, you know, what, what subcommittees you wanna work on. I think and hope that this happens relatively soon, over the next couple of months, you know, that these committees begin holding. I think and hope that this happens relatively soon, over the next couple months, you know, that these committees begin holding, you know, further public meetings and gather public input and come up with some solutions to problems.
And Jeremy, just to build on that a little bit, we had discussed that we have already received public input.
Yes.
And the plan would be with the website and everything that's going in, to direct those to the committee. So if the committee, if the suggestion was related to infrastructure, it would be suggested to, or referred on to, to that committee to look at it, even though we're all getting them, just so you guys know. We are aware of them. We've got a lot of input that's come in already. We appreciate it, some really good, real good ideas, and we're looking at them. There's a lot to filter through right now.
So with that said, too, I know you guys came here tonight. It's freezing outside. You know, I'll open the floor up for public comment, you know. I would just say it's, whether you've already sent an email in or spoke at the Opera House and spoke to the commissioners, you're more than welcome to speak tonight. I would just, you know, because you came out, I would just say, you know, just a few rules, keep it brief. I think those microphones work, right, Joy? You know, right there at the end? If, you know, just state your name, your address, then, you know, speak on the issue that you want to make us aware, or if you don't, like I said, I think the better venue will be the subcommittees, to really, you know, put the issues out there and solutions to those issues. But you're more than welcome to come up. I would just say be respectful, you know, keep it within a couple minutes, be respectful. We're not here to attack people or other ideas, but, you know, please, by all means, if you want to come up and speak, come up and speak and give us your ideas, we'll go through it and then we'll move on our way tonight. So if anybody would like to speak?
Well, we do, we need it for recording, for the video on YouTube. You want him to come up here and speak at this?
Walt, come up here.
Thank you, I'm Walt Prager, and I appreciate, I'm just delighted to hear that there will be a more transparent, open situation where people can have input. I wanted to thank you for changing that plan. And Chair rattled off, I think, at least eight different topics, but one thing that I've emphasized in the past is protecting our environment, providing clean water, infrastructure specifically for clean water, and protecting our water resources. And I just wanted to chime in that that was missing from your list so far, and yet in the original and in most of the explanations and descriptions of the American Rescue Act, our water resources are a top priority. Thank you.
Well, I, yeah, those are just general infrastructure. I, you know, going back to, you know, the guidance, that falls underneath infrastructure. That's where I would say that would fall under, so, you know, to come to that, you know, like I said, even if you come to the wrong one, they're going to listen, but, you know, in terms of like environment and water, you know, I think that would fall under like the infrastructure subcommittee. Yes, so.
I was going to speak as a, just as a citizen, but since Walt mentioned that, I am president of Isaac Walton Porter County. In its inception, I'm sorry, Gary Brown, I'm sorry. Gary, like the city, Brown like the color. Sorry, it's corny, but it works. By the way, your YouTube stinks, no offense. I worked in multimedia for a long time. Portage knows how to run a meeting and record it. They use two cameras. They spend a little bit more money. With all the money in Porter County, you don't want to be outshined by one city, do you?
Well, it's the biggest city. I don't know.
I would agree with his comment, the YouTube sucks.
Yes, it sucks. You can turn it up all the way and all of her comments over here from the auditor's office, you'll lose it. You can turn it up to 12, you can't hear a word of it.
Sometimes they accidentally upload the wrong camera video too. There's a security camera and a YouTube camera. If they upload the wrong camera, the sound is horrible.
There's at least six churches in Valparaiso that do a better job of their services than you guys do for this. Okay, that's enough of that. The environment. Green infrastructure was totally missing before. I was taught as a child it's okay to admit a mistake. There's no shame. Correct it. Do it openly. Make your appointments openly from both sides. If you lock up those groups with the people that are the long-term people that always get their wishes made, you will look silly, and you'll have to do it again. You really don't want that, do you? I don't think you do. Sloppy seconds is worse than just saying I made a mistake. Second, green infrastructure really wasn't covered very well. There are a lot of 501(c)(3) environmental groups and education groups and tourism groups that pick up leftovers from things that the county really can't do everything. You guys know that, and ladies, you guys know county can't do everything. So the 501(c)(3)'s catch it. Another example, you mentioned the Boys and Girls Club. You have 17 churches working with the homeless. There is no homeless plan. Homeless is a time bomb waiting to happen. How many things have you seen in the news? A lot of those people have mental problems. A lot of people end up there because of financial problems. But if you don't do something, something weird can happen and people can get hurt, all right? They're right down the street in Valpo, next to businesses that don't want to admit it's there, and it's in every part of Porter County. That's not on your list either. The whole state is red, redder than red, 98 dying, it was just in the Times today. This is not working. People are ignoring it. It is not going away, and we might have something totally different by summer. I don't know how to prepare for that. I don't end your job at all, at all. And all the medical people, either they're quitting or they're almost in total exhaustion. And a lot of teachers are quit trying to figure out which hand do they serve? Who's their master? How do they stay alive? How do they deal with their families? That somehow is missed too. This is a unique opportunity. The state has a giant fund for emergencies. The county now is going to have a giant fund to cover the emergencies we already had in the last two years. Two-year anniversary. Who could have dreamed this? Who could have ever dreamed you were going to go through this? And it might continue. So the things that you planned should be proactive for the extension, as if this is going to be another two years. You really should think that way. And then count your lucky stars and thank the Lord if it doesn't happen. None of that is there. So quit doing the pet projects. What should be a boon to the public should not be a boon to all. There's a big difference in the two words. All right? Thank you very much, and good luck.
Absolutely. All right, so I, Andrew Wanger, I live at 611 Center Street in here in Valparaiso, Indiana. Just FYI, full disclaimer, I am the county chair of the Democratic Party, but I'm not here for political reasons. I'm here to actually say what I think about this topic, about ARPA distribution, the funds and what they need to go to. But I always ask, why are we here? And most of us are here for the same reason tonight, to make sure that this, this gift that we've been given, this 30-odd million dollars, that this county is going to receive and distribute is used for good purposes, to help people at a time when a lot of people are hurting a lot. So there's a lot of clamor about this, and I get it. Things get noisy when we have to negotiate, or when stupendous things happen, or when dismal things happen. I don't think that this is a dismal thing, except the pandemic was, but I think that we have an opportunity for something stupendous here. I think this money can be a great thing, and I think that we have to deliberate though, as a community, on where this money is going to go. I do commend Commissioner Blaney, I think she had to hop out. For this change-up, I do hope some of this money is actually, I might differ a lot on some people's opinion here. I do hope that some of this money does go to the Memorial Opera House. It is a hallmark building. Yeah, this guy from right here just created something. It's a hallmark building in Valparaiso and in a city that is rapidly changing and becoming gentrified, caramel, mini caramel. I actually love it, and it is a great place for imaginative people to commune. I also think that's a hallmark thing when, when we have government-elected officials who actually do respond to what the public is asking for, and we have that in this case. We have somebody that came out and said, I'm not going to use money for this project because I heard people speak out against it, and this is what I propose, the steering committee, this process, this new process. And I hope that we come to these meetings when something like this arises, when we have tensions and everything, but I hope that people come to more of these meetings and stay involved, because things, so much happens at these meetings. I like the fact that county council, I'll say this too, I'm a fan of good process. I like the fact that county council meetings are at 5:30. I don't think that commissioner meetings should be earlier. I mean, but even if you can't make a meeting to the public, make sure you stay up to date on the meeting minutes, the agendas, the videos. We should absolutely get better equipment and do a better job. I think that's great. We live in the 21st society, 21st century society. We should stick to the, stick to the progress that we are able to achieve and then be able to communicate things to the public who oftentimes are working and can't come to meetings like this. So I just do want people to, sorry, I do want people to focus on the process here, to give more, to show up. Let's distribute money to hurting people and contribute on building up better communities. We have so much to do, and we don't have a lot of time to do it. I think that's part of the frustration, but thank you for listening.
Thank you.
You know, I could probably call all of you personally. My name is Robert Cotton, and I just want to thank you guys from the bottom of my heart with respect to the true leadership that I think is reflected in the process that you initially engaged in, which was actually to see that this money was there and began to have the executives and the fiscal, you know, at least begin a discussion. But with respect to the nature of how things have evolved, to do exactly as you are doing, I think you deserve, you know, I mean, you've got my respect, and I would certainly hope that everything as we follow through will reflect the spirit and intent of what's embedded in this, in this program. I mean, it's not about us. I think we've got the template all laid out for us. I mean, it just, there's so many people who have so many similar hardships as it relates to business interruptions or any number of different things. It'll be a challenge that will probably take more than one month before you vote on anything that emerges from a subcommittee. So I would respectfully request that any vote would be contingent upon some final, you know, conclusions drawn from an objective and engaged process. And I'd also say that going forward, consistent with what was mentioned by Gary, Mr. Gary Brown, is that you've got, you've got the health department that works their butts off. I mean, I think, I was saying, that's one of the critical components going forward in being able to be pandemic resilient. And in that regard, I would hope that there'd be some consideration with respect to expanding, maybe even to the, into the realm of mental health, however additional staff, you know, might help our county at large deal with the pandemic going forward. So thank you very much, and I apologize for.
Don't apologize. Hi, my name is Sheila Sweeney. I live at 1606 Carers Drive in Valpo. I put a petition together online. I got about 154 signatures and comments from people who live in Porter County about the original proposal, and now that's not happening, so I applaud again, just like others said. I'm glad that we're pressing the reset button on this, doing the right thing, and I just really hope that this council and these subcommittees that you're setting up will be seeking public input vigorously, in a way, you know, that is easy for regular citizens to participate as much as possible, even if they're not on social media, if they don't have the internet, like you need to talk to everyone as best you can. Talk to social workers, you know. Number one, I think they are the people who know what went on during the pandemic. Talk to teachers. They know what's going on with the families of Porter County. Talk to the nurses and the doctors of this committee. Talk to the people who work at nursing homes. Talk to the sheriff's office. Talk to them about like what changed during the pandemic with people who are overdosing, most likely, even in the jail. Dealing with the pandemic in the jail, from what I read, was horrific. A statistic from the Indiana Coalition Against Domestic Violence reported that domestic violence deaths rose 181% during the pandemic. Talk to the caring place, please. Talk to the social workers, please. Talk to housing opportunities, please. Talk to Mitch at Respite House, please. Talk to Paul Schreiner and everyone at, Neighbors? Project Neighbors, please. Talk to the people of all the towns in Porter County, not just Valpo. Please, talk to the people, talk to the nonprofits, talk to the people who are working and dealing with this, with all the residents who suffered from this pandemic. Please, I beg you to do the right thing, and you will look like the heroes, and you'll be recognizing the heroes who are dealing with this on the front lines. Thank you.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to take a moment real quick to remind you guys and everybody in here that the website is still up and accepting suggestions and ideas. In addition to it, for those that don't have internet or don't have a way, I'm sure if you wanted to write us a letter to the council or the commissioners, we would get, not I'm sure, I know, we would get it. So if you guys want to go that route, I know meetings, everybody can't make 5:30. Everybody's not going to be able to make the committee meeting. So just, yeah, keep the ideas coming. That's, that's how we get better.
Mitch Peters, I just want to say, there's never going to be enough money to satisfy all of our needs. So it's not about the money, it's about the process, and that's what you're hearing here tonight. We all feel better about this process and the way it's going down. We all now have an opportunity to submit through the portal. We all have an opportunity to participate. That's what good government's all about. That's why we elect you, through our participation. So I just, you know, I haven't submitted anything, probably won't, but I just want to encourage all of you to continue along this path, follow the process. That's what these people are here about. That's what the people in our communities expect. Thanks.
Elizabeth Gangrick, Indiana Avenue, Valparaiso. I'm a creature of procedure, so I'm hearing steering committees, subcommittees, different topics. When are we going to have a chart that says who's on which committee? Which, which topics is that committee, subcommittee going to cover? What kind of influence or liaison do you want with the public in terms of not just non-for-profits, but individual citizens? I'd love to see, I think what happened with the May money is that nobody knew what was going on. It was not well advertised. And I think with the discussion tonight with all of these problems and topics and issues, that we need some procedural clarity. So if we could have dates, votes, input, all of those things, again, spelled out, that would be extremely helpful. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
And I think that's the route we're going. We got to coordinate with the commissioners. I mean, there's going to be coordination involved in who's on what committees, and it's going to take a little time to set up.
Hello, Becky Matteo Lombardini, 1105 Dune Meadows in Porter. Happy New Year, everybody. Praying for all of us going through what we all are doing. A couple months ago, I actually saw an article, and I messaged Bob Cotton, and I said, we're getting this money, and it says, you know, where it's going. I said, we just really need to think about this a little bit more. And he's like, wow, you know? And I'm like, never say never, and here we all are. So I did reach out, I have talked to people, I did reach out to the commissioners. Laura did say, please do submit your ideas, and one of mine was a wellness center that would help address those three big issues that we've talked about for ages, since I've been, you know, since I've been growing up and especially out here in Porter County. Keeping the drugs away from our kids, getting better with our mental health, and helping homeless people. So I am, well, the reason I'm talking tonight is that I'd like for you to know that that's what I've been working on, and if there's anybody who has any ideas, that you could talk to me, and hopefully that I could participate in that process. Thank you, guys.
Are we all good?
All right, we're done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You got these asked.
Sure.
Hey, good evening, Susie.
Hi, good evening. Sorry, this is easier for me to, oh, hold on, sorry.
I'm Susie Talewski from Porter County, and first of all, just wanted to ask a quick question about. to ask a quick question about the procedure, I guess, because my understanding is that there has been an ordinance already passed by the commissioners with the actual allocations. And so I thought there would be like a vote on it, and I've been told that the vote would take place in, at the next meeting in February. So is that still on? Like, what's the procedure?
Are you talking about commissioners or councils?
I'm talking about the council, whether you guys are going to vote for the appropriations from the last ordinance that the commissioners passed on October 26th.
Yeah, that still will be on the agenda.
For?
For February.
For February. Okay, so you guys will vote yes or no?
Yes. There's some things on there that, we definitely have to, premium pay, there's some things on there, yes, it will be on the agenda for February.
Okay, so will you guys be doing that like as kind of a line item type thing, so some things will pass, some things won't? I mean, because I just kind of understood it as an entire ordinance, like a one unit.
We could, as a body, we could take it as a whole, or tear it apart, you know, that would be up to this board, yeah.
Okay.
How they approach that.
So I guess then what I'm wondering is what has changed in terms of, you know, there's been some talk here, I read Commissioner Blaney's commentary here, guest commentary, she's making suggestions, you know, to sort of backtrack, so is just the Memorial Opera House off the table, or are there other items that are off the table that are going to be rejected and possibly go back? I mean, have you guys thought about this, or?
That's what'll happen next month, yeah. How this body decides, or if the commissioners take action prior to us, you know, by amending it, or if not, you know, how this body decides in February.
Okay, so they can actually amend their ordinance? Prior?
Yes, that, that.
Okay. I'm sorry, I just don't, I'm just trying to understand.
It was always, that original plan was always a working document, and it only took in account half of the money that we were receiving.
Right.
So it was always a working document, yes.
Okay, all right, so there might be an amendment.
They could amend it every meeting.
Okay.
You know, forever. It's a working document until, I guess, until all the money's appropriated, so.
Okay, all right, well, that's interesting, okay. So I, I'm glad to know that. So obviously, you know, as I, you know, I attended the December 7th meeting at the Memorial Opera House, some of you guys may remember, I did speak out against, you know, the huge allocation from the Memorial Opera House, and I'm really, really glad that the people of Porter County have, you know, voiced their opinion on this, and, you know, that this is going to be altered or changed or postponed, because I did not think that that was an appropriate use of the pandemic money. And I'm glad to see that Commissioner Blaney has heard the voice of the people, and that she is also suggesting, you know, some alterations. One thing that I really would like, because I am a little worried about, you know, subcommittees, and who's going to appoint the people on the subcommittees, because obviously what I'm worried about is, as someone here mentioned prior, is that basically, you know, the people who are going to be on these subcommittees are all going to be your cronies, your buddies, you know, and not really a good cross-section of the people. So I just want to make sure that that's going to be a fair process, if it goes that direction. One thing I think that is really, really great, I hope all of you have looked at this, it is from Lieutenant Governor Suzanne Crouch's office, her Office of Community and Rural Affairs. It is called Spending Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. Are you, are you all aware of this document here?
We're aware of it, we're aware of the, yeah, the documents. I spend a lot of time on NACO's website, looking at all the counties and cities across the country, yes. So, yes, I don't, you know, Susie, I don't mean to push it along, but, you know, is there ideas?
Should I, should I speed up?
What's that?
Should I speed up?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. So anyways, what I'm suggesting is that instead of like reinventing the wheel here, you know, how about taking some of what's in this document here that her office spent obviously a lot of time working on, she has actually, under recommended phases, a lot of really, just basically an entire procedure of how to go ahead and assemble a core team, you know, I guess, that would be under these subcommittees that Commissioner Blaney is suggesting. You know, she suggests to create an in-depth analysis of, like, a needs assessment, develop a vision, I mean, there's a whole procedure here. Explore other funding options and finalize and implement plan, you know, and then submit a report, you know, she's even got a worksheet. I mean, this is really a great document, I hope you guys will, you know, I mean, obviously, we're a little behind now with things because we're going to reset, kind of go backwards and reset. So I hope that you'll use this, because they, they really thought this out carefully, you know. And yes, I mean, I know some people might not like that I said that, but it is true, people will be worried about who are on these subcommittees. I hope you guys have an open process as to, you know, who's going to be on these subcommittees, get a big cross-section of people from the north part of the county all the way to the south part of the county. And I feel like sometimes, unfortunately, everything is more Valpo-centric and Portage-centric, and we kind of cut out other parts, you know, Hebron, Couch, other parts of this county, it's a very, very big county, you know, so it would be great if we heard what they all need too. And I want to just echo what some of the other people said, we have a big problem with homelessness, I think that should be one of the top priorities of each and every one of you, and also a big, big problem, mental health problems in this county. It is probably one of the greatest problems that's actually been exacerbated by the pandemic, and it's completely connected to the pandemic. And everything you guys think of in terms of what needs to be funded, and I believe it should all be connected in some way to the pandemic situation, pandemic relief, recovery, and anybody who's been affected by the pandemic. Not projects that have been sort of, you know, on the table for years here in Porter County that you guys would like to see funded. That's really not what these funds are for, you know, and I think that there was some confusion before. You know, in everybody's defense, thank you, in everybody's defense, this is brand new, this is like a one-shot deal, you know, all these funds coming through, and I know it's overwhelming, you know, because there is, like you said, Jeremy, Councilor Rivas, there's a lot to read, a lot to absorb, you know, I've been trying to read through a lot of this stuff, and of course, there was the interim final rule from the Treasury, now there's the final rule, so you got to read that and get up to speed on that. So I just want to thank you all for your hard work, you know, I do appreciate all of you, we all do, and we really appreciate that you are listening to us. That is the most important thing you can all do, is listen to the people. And for that, we're going to love you a lot more. So thank you very much.
So, you know, in terms of us, you know, obviously, I don't think we're going to decide right now, but it'll be two or three of us sitting on it, the commissioners will sit on it, but I think they're going to reach out. We don't, they're going to meet, I think they meet next week or the week after, and they'll begin to put it together, and yeah, I believe that, you know, our page that now will either grow, you know, on our website, to start laying out the committee, and, you know, they'll show the structure, public meetings are going to happen, you know, so that, the idea is to make sure all of that's out there so people can come, and I definitely encourage people to come, come with, you know, these committees, come with ideas, come with organizations, come with solutions, you know, because that's the best way to get some of the funding, you know. It's, because I think that's, what we're after here is to fund problems, you know, and go after, you know, some solutions. So that means getting with your organizations and coming over these, you know, the course of the next couple of months, however long it is, you know, with organizations and solutions, so that, you know, the idea, the problem can get funded with this money. So I appreciate you guys all coming out tonight, really do, and we're here every month, last Tuesday of every month, so it's, you know, by all means. So, is there anything else that?
Make a motion.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second on the floor, to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or the same sign. Good night.